Okay, ready? Welcome. We need, we need the microphone, microphone. Yes, for the people that are listening online.
Okay, I am a Westminster Water Warrior. We worked fiercely throughout the previous city council due to crazy high water rates. And I think we did a pretty good job. Because as you can see, none of them are before you today. Mayor Atchison, gone. Anita Sykes, gone. Catherine Scully, gone. John Bolts, gone. Matt Scherfong, gone. Do you want to be the next person on this list? The citizens of Westminster spoke loudly. At the last election, and said, "We cannot afford these crazy high water rates." Mr. Demond, you even said, "I can't afford to water my backyard." I ask you, can you water your backyard now? Within the last 12 months, this city council has lowered rates. And within 12 months, you have raised them. I can't wait to see my next $1,200 water bill. I'm sure it's in the mail. I feel anger. I feel hurt. I feel betrayed. I personally walked and broke bread with several of you. And on the Canton Trail, you claimed that you were committed to lowering the prices of water in the city of Westminster. How are you going to explain the financial burden that you are getting ready to place on every grandparent, every parent, and every child for generations to come moving in Westminster? Twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven thousand petition signers went to the Water Warriors. And I can guarantee you, they are not going to approve or be happy with this outrageously expensive water treatment plant. Do you think the residents of Westminster are not going to know? How and who do you think is going to pay for this? How many city engineers that came up with this high-priced plan even live within the city of Westminster? I think you're happy to take the paychecks and live elsewhere. I want to believe that your hearts, your hearts are in the right place. I know that several of you tried to keep God in the center of every decision. But taking another man's property under the guise of eminent domain when there are other alternatives is nothing but stealing. Imagine if that was your mother's land. You are taking it. It is theft. You may feel that we are all Bruce Baker cronies. But that is not true. And bottom line to all of you, math doesn't and never will lie. You cannot spend hundreds of millions of dollars and not think that it's not going to impact every single resident within Westminster. There are more affordable options. I pray that God finds his way into your heart, into your minds. Because going down this treacherous path of death will impact citizens who will never recover. Welcome to the City of Mike Frank, and thank you for listening to me. I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Was it supposed to be next? My husband's not here yet, but I will take the time. I agree with everything Sandy said.
We need your name, please.
I'm Christine Ireland. I'm at 13816 Lexington Place. I agree with what Sandy said. I am a water warrior. She and I are not going to give up the fight. I emailed all of you last night. I heard from one of you about an independent audit of our water treatment facilities, an outside independent audit. I don't know if that happened. Who did the audit? If the same people did the audit that did it three years ago, we are getting the same result. And it's not okay. People expect more than this. And I will not stop fighting for this city, the people in it. Because their money is your money that you are spending. And I know people are being laid off left and right, and they cannot survive this higher water rates. This economy has changed. It's no longer booming. And I'm not sure that land is going to be as valuable as you think it is in a year or two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person I have on my list is Debbie Teeter. I'm going to go back to the top, Debbie Teeter. I do, Sandy Johnson. Welcome.
Hello, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I've been here once before, and it's been a while since I've been back. Oh, sorry, Sandy Johnson over in Highland Village, so not too far away. I'm actually here to ask you to support the proposal to continue with the water. I became involved in water in Westminster, actually, many years ago. I think it was about five years ago when I first moved here. Because water is the most important issue that we face for our future. And it's a challenging issue. It's incredibly difficult. We all know we're in the middle of a mega drought. We know that we are confronted with climate change. We know we are confronted with the threat of fires. At the same time, we're trying to understand the current economic needs, the current political needs, and provide for the needs of our children and our grandchildren. It's very challenging to balance that. What I've seen, however, some of the things that I didn't like initially. But I saw the city council, pardon me, I saw the city council take action to reduce water rates. And they were fairly dramatic cuts. That made me quite nervous about the future of sustainability. And I was worried about what was going to happen with water treatment. I got involved in kind of Water 2025 through community sessions. I was one of those folks that was NIMBY. I didn't want it in my backyard. And I went to the many educational sessions that were sponsored by the city. And they really changed my viewpoint. I actually came to see the water plant proposed site as really being the only answer that made sense in terms of engineering, that made sense in terms of sustainability. The second, and this, of course, I think you're all well familiar with the initial report that was done with the previous city council and the thought that went into looking at multiple sites to try to understand what was going to meet the future needs of our community. The report that just came out really echoed those findings. And I think that the city council is faced with the decision, do we do nothing? And do we allow essentially our children and our grandchildren to assume even greater debt? To try to fix something in the future that we have the opportunity to fix now? Or do we take steps now to actually prevent economic harm, environmental harm? And my goodness, if you looked at the health, if you looked at the reports, health harm. There's really only one option that we have to provide safe drinking water for us, for our families in the future. And so I do ask you to move forward with this, understanding that this is a challenge for city council. There's going to be some short-term political cost. And certainly, there's economic costs, but that's not unplanned for. And that was very clear in the plan that you presented. Thank you.
Thank you. I have asked that there is no speaking in here. If you want to go outside and speak, that's fine. We are here to listen to the community first, and then the council will be deliberating. So, thank you. I think I saw her walk in. Debbie Teeter is next on my list. Welcome.
Thank you all, and thank you all for what you do. I really appreciate your service. And I do know that this is an extremely difficult decision, bringing up the water. And as the few things that I have reviewed and I have concerns over, which I had concerns before, and that's really based on this site. It's the extra plumbing that we have to do under the highway, boring under the highway, the area that it's at. The fact that it's some of the most expensive land in the city of Westminster. These were all concerns when we fought the water before. Also concerned that we're almost back to the same cost that we were before. And that's all going to trickle down to the residents as well. I agree that water is in demand and that it's going to be something that's hard for us to keep up with as years, as years pass and conservation is necessary. But also, when we have people, homes, back to those water rates are shooting up there again, pretty high. My public service bill doubled, one and a half this year after I went and took the expense of exchanging out everything for low-energy appliances and every light is LED. And then I got handed a bill that was twice as much for electricity. So this year, I took out a good portion of my yard. And I'm going to get handed that bill back and increase water rates and be right back where I started from. That little project cost me over $3,000 with the donation of the box and plant. And so I'm not sure. I guess I'm good. I got a good job instead of my husband. I don't know what my neighbors are going to do. And that's always been my concern, was Willie going to do next door? And what are the other people in the fixing company doing? Because I'm still watching those rates go sky high. So I really would like to ask you to still consider some of these lesser options. I've seen some, the rebuild of the center plant. That can go through for the next 20 years as we build onto something else, a different location where we don't have to go under the highway. There was a location that wasn't chosen because it went under railroad tracks. I'm not sure why railroad tracks are worse than going under a highway and you want construction to verify on that. So I'm just encouraging you to still look at this and not pass this current plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Scott Ireland here? Okay, Harold Stark. Welcome.
Thanks for letting me speak. Harold Stark, 54, West 97th Place, right across the place where the new plant was, is supposed to be built. I was part of the Citizens Planning Committee. And I would love to urge you to approve the extra financing for that. I think everything else would just be a lot of steps back. And we never know where those steps afterwards will lead again. Is it going to be anything better? I don't know. I think there was a lot of thought going into that plan. And with the change, you know, the big change in the city council that we had, it still seems we're still moving in a similar direction with some changes, which I think are a good idea. So I don't quite see going back and going, starting everything completely over. It's going to be a better way for this. So I hope this will, this will move forward, and we'll see what comes with that. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Carol Campbell. Welcome.
So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Councilors. My name is Carol Campbell. I'm a 40-year resident of Westminster residing in Legacy Ridge. I've worked for the Environmental Protection Agency for 33 years. And I have extensive expertise in water quality and treatment. I support clean and safe drinking water. I support the city moving the $22 million from the Utility Capital Project Reserve to the Utility Water Fund, which is on the second meeting tonight. And this will preserve the city's ability to appeal the land acquisition cost or to pay the landowner what is owed so we can move forward on this new water treatment plant build. The sooner and faster we can build a new water treatment facility, the less it will cost. I agree with option four, as I said last week, with a couple of caveats, including adding ozonation and a consideration of the granular activated carbon treatment, mainly because of emerging contaminants like PFAS that are reasonably foreseeable that we're going to have to treat in the future. I have a few questions, which I didn't get to ask last week, which is mainly why I'm here. How much did the reevaluation of the water treatment plant options end up costing the city? What exactly is the proposed treatment terrain for option four versus Water 2025? Last meeting, it sounded like there was only one treatment terrain in option four versus three in Water 2025 plus ozoneation. Did the Water 2025 plan include granular activated carbon? Is the price listed for the options, the complete build-out costs? When will a decision be made on which option will proceed? When will the design and construction begin once a decision is made? What's the difference in 14 million gallon per day plant built under the Water 2025 and the one to be built first under option four? What will go online and when? How will Semper be modified in option four? Will there just be an O and M cost at $4 million per year or more? Or will there be any new equipment put into place? How much of the cost for option four is for the facility, for Semper, and for property costs? When will we see possible financing options and financing decisions for the facility? How will the city get grants, bonds, or loans for the costs, which are extremely variable based on the table I saw last week? It's imperative that a decision for a new drinking water facility be made as soon as possible so we can minimize the cost to the city and the residents and have a facility online that is state-of-the-art to back up and eventually replace the Semper water treatment plant. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. My next speaker is Karen Cola. One second. Carol, could we get that list and give it to the city clerk so we have it all? Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Karen Colaviti, 9940 West Cliff Parkway. Yes, water is very important, very, very important. And that's why taking one consultant's word and plan for it is a little silly. When we're talking about hurrying up the project so that we can build it before prices go up, there's another way of dealing with that is get other alternatives that would be lower cost and different methods than is being proposed. I personally don't trust the consultants who have been working on this. There's nothing to make me think that theirs is the best and only way to do things. An independent audit would be a good idea. But, you know, there are imaginative and financially responsible designers. And I don't think that the consulting firm that has been involved is one of them. If we're going to be spending 150 million-plus dollars on, on water for the future that's going to be in place for decades, I don't personally think that, you know, a million dollars here and a million dollars there to get a good, a good design is out of, out of, you know, out of reach. That's, that's, you can save hundreds of millions with good design, with, with people who think differently and plan differently. There's, anyway, I just don't think that the one consultant approach and hurry up and build it before the costs go up even more, I don't think that's a very good idea. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. That's the last, unless Scott Ireland walked in and I didn't see? That's the last speaker I had signed up. Is there anyone here that didn't get signed up that wants to speak? Okay, we'll close public comment, and that brings us to item B. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. We've moved to pass Council Bill Number Two on Second Reading appropriating a transfer of $22,320,503 from the Utility Capital Project Reserve to the Utility Fund for the remaining balance on the 37.65 acres of land acquisition related to Jefferson County District Court Case 2020 CV 3231.
Counselor Emmons.
Second. It's been moved and sent to pass Counselor's Bill Number Two. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker.
Thank you. I think there's good news that the court order was only entered today. So we have 49 days from today before we have to make a decision as to whether to proceed. I'd also like to confirm with our attorney that if we appeal this, we must buy the property. Is that the fact, Mr. Frankel?
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, and as the agenda memo details, excuse me. One of the concerns was that 49-day clock in that we had not yet received a court order. And we had actually submitted through outside counsel a stipulated order which would clarify when the 49-day clocks would start. As councils, where the verdict on the valuation came back on December 23rd, 49 days from which would be this Friday. So thus, the urgency of getting it on to tonight's agenda. So today at 11:05 a.m., we received a copy of the signed order from the court. So that is good in that we have clarity as to the 49-day clock. So that is good in that we have clarity as to the 49 day clock. And the order specifically calls out that pursuant to the statute, this order will constitute the final determination of the district court. And that would trigger the start of the clock. So we do have 49 days in which to decide or take action on submitting payment and submitting a notice of appeal. The other issue that was identified in the memos continuing, and that is the city's obligation for interest does continue to accrue. And we understand that's in some excess of $4,000 per day. So to Counselor Baker, to your question, the the options include depositing the funds with the clerk of the court and filing a notice of appeal if the council's decision is to pursue acquisition of the land. And the appeal could potentially lower the cost of acquisition. If council decides not to appropriate and to not deposit funds with the court and pursue the appeal, the alternative that option would be abandonment of the acquisition. And abandonment of this acquisition would just require that we settle up with the landowner as to our possession of the land, which we've had since early 2020. So about two and a half years of possession. The other question, if abandoned or desired, would be attorney's fees. Because of the verdict coming back in excess of 130% of our final offer, the question would be whether the city would be liable for the attorney's fees. Just just so that all people are aware of the background here. When the city had its appraisal done in 2019, the appraisal on the land came in at $9 million. And we negotiated with the landowner at that time and made a final offer of $10.25 million in an effort to acquire this without using the court process of eminent domain. That offer of 10.25 million was not accepted. Thus, the eminent domain process moved forward and the landowner's appraisal was then performed. And my understanding is it was completed in April of '21. So about a year after the case started is the first time we saw their their appraisal. And obviously, the valuation trial was conducted just past December. It was a question of the two appraisals in essence. Which of the values was most persuasive to the commissioners who heard the evidence? And so that verdict that was issued on December 23rd was resolved. And it is basically in between our value and the landowner's value. And it's reflected it, I believe it's 27 million of which we've already paid nine. So the appropriation that's before you tonight would make up the difference between the 9 million that was deposited and the $27 million that was the finding of the verdict.
And well, the answer to my question is, is right now we have an option of appealing or like abandoning the condemnation proceeding.
Yes, Counselor. So abandonment would mean that we would be responsible, I believe, for rent for the time that we possess the property and potentially for attorney's fees. So of the $9 million that was deposited, it's likely that most of that would be used for the rent and the attorney's fees.
Right. Okay. But if we appeal, we lose the option of abandonment, correct?
Yeah, appealing and depositing the money with the court would be a pathway toward acquiring the land. So the acquisition would be instead of abandonment. And the acquisition per the verdict would be $27 million for the land itself. And then we'd have to settle up this or as attorney's fees and costs.
Right. So by basically filing this appeal, we're in a in a sense biasing our decision to build the plant at the Westminster Boulevard site. Is we're, I'm not talking to you, attorney, I'm talking to my colleagues. We're abandoning all the other options we have. Because it'd be crazy to proceed with this and not use it for the stated purpose. Okay, I I was disappointed when I was reading some answers to some questions the Mayor Protem had asked. When I in this handout we had saying that spending 172 million dollars on Semper wouldn't make it last 50 years. I was under the impression that all of the four options were equal. But that seems not to be the case now. I know in options two, three and four, we were going to spend $28 million to keep Semper running for the next 20 years. Because that's when phase two of options two, three and four would kick in. And that's where there is all of the required, the way I calculated, at least $300 million of extra expense to build the two additional water trains. Sure.
Can I ask you to clarify something for me, just so I understand where you're coming from? When you say that they're all equal, that was never my understanding. Each of them had, I mean, we had a whole map of varying degrees of protection that each one of them gave us in length and everything else. So can you can you tell me what you mean by that you thought all the options were equal?
How long they would last, 50 years. 50 years is actually the number that I came up with because I began by asking, how long is how long is Northwest going to last? And with proper maintenance and stuff like that, it could last 50 years. It could last even longer. So I asked about all the other ones. Is that, and I use the IRS codes because the IRS codes in certain kinds of industrial facilities use like a depreciation schedule of 50 years. So that's where I came up with the 50 year timeframe of, you know, in some reports, we'd like to build forever plants that as long as we maintain them and keep them up as parts wear out and stuff like that, that we can go on forever. But 50 years was was just the state. And in options two, three and four, in 20 years, we plan on building two more water trains on each of them because we're going to close out Semper. Or at least that's my understanding. So in a sense, we weren't comparing apples to apples with the three. Because we have this all planned expense of three of at least 300 million, the way I calculate. And I calculated because each water train with its pipelines and whatever could be about 150 million each. And right now Semper makes can make 44 million gallons a day. And all of the advantages that we could gain by ozoneation and activated carbon filters wouldn't help us. Because any day we need more than 15 million gallons, we'd have to use either Northwest or Semper. So any advantage in taste would be wiped out by the water from Northwest or Semper joining into the system. So I don't know what advantage we get at all of building this 50 million gallon a day water train. And this relates back to the item before us. The item before us is do we appeal? And if we do, it locks us into buying this land. There's no way back. And now that we have 49 days, I would urge this council, and I'll make a motion now to really table this. Thank you.
There's been a motion to table. I need Mr. Frankel, your expertise in Roberts rules. We have to deal with that right now, right?
So, yes, if there's a second.
Is there a second? So it dies? I have Counselor Numella and then.
Okay, so the the motion before us tonight is whether or not we choose to move dollars from our utility capital project reserve over to our utility water fund. So not whether or not to appeal the this this verdict. But what we're really talking about, I think, in hearing from the community tonight is certainly the impact of water pricing on our everyday budget. You know, it, we are not alone as a community throughout the whole region. You can ask almost any of your friends in different cities. Their water, their water pricing is going up. At the same time, our utilities are going up. And it's getting increasingly harder for people who are on fixed incomes to stay in their homes. Right? And with inflation and our rents not, our rents are going up, our housing prices are going up. There's a broader issue here with keeping people housed. And to what extent the city is able to help keep people housed and able to help, whether it's subsidizing water rates, because that's what we would be doing if we lower them back down, subsidizing water rates or subsidizing housing or subsidizing utilities. And we have a lot of programs that are aimed to help people on the very lower end of our income spectrum with utility bills and things like that. But that's something that is a broader issue for us to address. I do want to say that, yes, all of us were elected here with the hopes that each one of us would take very seriously what it means to maintain a healthy, long lasting, resilient water supply. I really appreciate the fact that we did take time out. We took almost a year here to reevaluate and bring in a different consultant than we originally had who created our water 2025 to look at what should we be doing and help us understand what are our options? What does it cost? And as we think about, we're the stewards of our long term health as a community, as our fiscal, the fiscal responsibility of maintaining our water supply, of maintaining the city overall. And I think we all took that very seriously in evaluating the different options that were put before us. And staff really did help us understand what those options meant. With that, we're looking at reducing the cost of a new water plant to $100 million. That's not a small number as it spreads out over time. We still need to figure out, how do we pay for that? So in the typical realm of paying for public utilities, it's a combination of collecting fees and borrowing. And and certainly we've had our own conversations about like, how much do we put ourselves into? How much do our fees actually pay for the water system that we have? It was quoted last year, our water system with all the pipes and all, everything underground, everything above ground is like $4 billion. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's $4 billion utility. And it costs about 15 million a year to maintain. I'm staring at staff to give me at least some not, I mean, that's what we've, that's what we've set aside. But theoretically, it could cost even more. So all the water main breaks that you see, those all have a cost. And making sure that our 50, 60, 70 year old utility water pipes throughout the city, they need to be replaced. This costs money, just like our houses. Whether we rent or own, we know we have to replace things over time. So there's an ongoing maintenance cost. And there is, yes, the need to replace our water treatment plants over time, just like we replace our furnace. These things don't last forever. And with the study that we've done, the direction we're going, I think we all agree on right now as the, you know, the most logical next step. It doesn't solve everything. And so that is something for us that we still need to address is we hear from the community. Your 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 rents, your housing, your utility pricing and your water bills, yes, they're all going up. And that's a condition that every one of us is experiencing. And those of us who don't have the capacity to absorb that, they are at risk. A lot of our community members are at risk. And that's, again, something we can talk about. But the first thing we're going to do right now is think about what makes the most sense for our community with our water utility.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, too. I want to emphasize a couple of things here is this is our second engineering firm that we've we've had on this project. I I've been involved, I was a resident and I got involved in the 2025 site selection through the Chamber of Commerce. So I've been part of this process since early 2018. And so this is not, and this is hundreds of hundreds of hours that council's been reviewing this. It's not just pulling a number out of somewhere. We we looked at the options and we're not engineers. We have to trust other people. We we have to find trust in that. And, you know, one of the issues too is that from a cost standpoint, we we keep going back to the Semper rehabilitation at 172 million dollars. It it won't give us the deep bed filtration that we will need eventually. It and the the price pricing on that, because the new site has been studied ad nauseam, the 192 that we're looking on that is a solid pricing. The Semper rehabilitation site has a swing of 30% negative below that to 50% above. And we know usually how those construction prices go. It's not going to be 30% less than 172. I'm hoping none of our costs are going to be 50% over. But the new Westminster Boulevard site has been studied from every single angle. If we have an issue in our water, I don't think our irrigation cares what goes on our grass. It's still water. We have Northwest plant. We will have the new 14.7. We will not have to. And the plan from day one with water 2025 was to run Semper until it wouldn't run anymore. That has always been the plan since the first time I stepped in that room. And we were, the the residents and the the business groups that were participating in that said, we're not just going to throw Semper away because it still works. We're going to run it until it drops. And so we have that backup on that. We can't just take a water train and cut out the little pieces on it and stick it on a map and go, oh, if it's there, that should be fine. That's foolishness, absolute foolishness. So we we have options now too. And so these things, if we're going to add ozonization to this, the new site is the cheapest way to do that. And that affects taste and color. The water will still be safe without it with the deep beds. We cannot get deep bed filtration at Semper. It just doesn't work. There's no place to go. Okay, and it's not a matter of whether we go on a highway or go under a railroad track. The Semper site, we needed because of the significant elevation changes, we needed pumps on both sides of that. More pumps to go into that to add to the cost. So we're looking at at a more specific cost on that site too. And so I think all these things. I'll come back to water rates. We slashed water rates significantly, significantly. And now we're dealing with cost and we raised the rates 4.5%. You know, I don't, I don't know what else we can do to not not go in the hole. So those are my comments.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start on water rates. So I was specifically called out by name, so I'll specifically answer that. If you listened to my conversation, which some of you have had per conversation, but even publicly, I've always said the problem was that we went too high, too fast. I had a problem with the way we have the tier system structured. And I've told my colleagues that if we feel that the tier structure still needs massaging, then I think we should have that conversation. But however, there was a lot of math and agreement between most of us as far as where those tiers landed. Because to me, and I'll say this now and I said it then, the top tier should truly be a place where people aren't maintaining their their lawn. That that's extraordinary in my mind. So if we need to reevaluate that, so be it. But I I'm not willing to say we shouldn't have a third tier. What I do believe is most people should fit inside that first and second tier because that's maintaining property that you bought whenever you bought it. The other thing that I've always said is that cost will go up. There is not anything anybody on this council can do about that. There's not anything any of us can do to pretend like we don't have to cover the cost that it. There's not anything any of us can do to pretend like we don't have to cover the cost that it for operators. For chemicals, for materials, for all the things that go into operating the enterprise. That's, that's reality. What we have asked staff to do, and I, I, this is a question for staff. I'd like to talk about the, the rate structure that we've talked about that goes beyond this last year. And the ask of council was for us to go back to being able to do it the way it's been historically, which is more in that 4%. 4.5% range year over year, where it's more akin to an increase in those, those things opposed to increasing it. Where in 2018's water rate, it was spelled out that part of the increase at that time was to get people to conserve. That was part of what we were pitched, which I had objection to. So with that being said, can you talk about that and how this plan fits inside that rate structure? Because that's what we were told we were doing. And then we would have to read once, I believe it's over a 10-year period.
I'm going to repeat your question. So are you asking about how the reduction in the water rates impacts our ability or not to be able to fund the water treatment?
Not, not the, so say we, today's the starting point. And we know that year over year, we're going to look at increases that are in that, that range that we've historically seen. This plan fits inside of that historic thing. So we're not planning on this being done through spikes. Because a lot of what I've heard concern is that now that if we move forward with this, we're just going back to saying, we're going to go to six, seven, eight. You know, 10, whatever kind of huge increases we've seen in the past. And that is not what we were presented. And I just wanted to be clear with that on the record.
Absolutely. Yes, so the, the model that we talked to council about, we did include the 200 million. We went through a variety of scenarios so council could see what each of those scenarios look like. The one that included $200 million for the plant site, which is akin to the option for the council's comparing with the site at Westminster Boulevard. That had us balancing out 10 years with a rate increase of 4.5% every year.
Great, thank you. You may want to hang out because I have other questions, but I just wanted to be sure because that is consistent with my position. And maybe not everybody, but I can only speak for myself that I do believe and always have believed that there will be increases. But I wanted them to be reasonable. And to me, as a rate payer, that is, is reasonable. The other thing I want to address, I have heard both from Counselor Baker, but also from the public since then. About West Cliff and Trenwood Park being a potential consideration and that that was never looked at. And so that was one of my questions and you did point out that it had been looked at. So a couple portions, portions on that, whatever you want to share as far as, has that been looked at? But the other thing that I want to talk about is we've heard a lot about drilling under 36. My understanding is no matter what option, we have to do some level of going under 36 for sure. And potentially other areas that could be costly. And maybe you can talk about that because I think that it's important for the public to understand. That's going to happen no matter what option that we have from my understanding. I want to make sure I'm not off.
Yes, absolutely. I'll, I'll start talking and then if I mess something up, Stephanie Blake here will, will correct me. Regarding the two properties that were discussed in some previous discussions. They are Trentwood and, I think, Trenwood and?
West Cliff.
Thank you. Both of those locations, one is an active open space and one is planned to be parks. The West Cliff, I believe, is the smaller of the two. It's about 26 acres and it would require putting industrial facilities, the water treatment plant itself, right on the border with residential homes. So during the original siting study, when these sites were evaluated, it was taken out of the running for that reason. It was a little too small and would have significant impact on the neighborhood. The one to the north of there would also require, it would require the roads to that site or through a residential neighborhood. And so we would have to either have major semi trucks driving through that neighborhood to deliver chemicals. Or build a bridge, a substantial bridge across Big Dry Creek. So that cost is pretty significant. And that was part of the reason why that one wasn't brought forward in the process.
On, on the same line of, of piping, I think it's also important and make sure again that I'm straight in what I'm voting on. And that the public understands. Part of the reduction in costs that we've seen with this plan versus 2025 is you're rethinking about what was necessary in terms of volume of water. Can you, can you talk about that and how that's changed this project? Because I do know that is something specifically, I was concerned about the placement of it at that site. Knowing that there was, I think at the time, something like $50 million we were estimating in, in piping because of the location.
Yeah, one of the nice things about building a smaller plant is that the raw water pipeline that has to go out to the plant is a smaller diameter. It doesn't have to carry as much flow to get there. And then the potable water line, because it's sending less water into the system, we were able to use smaller infrastructure in the distribution system. And design or plan for a smaller length of pipe to get to a different part of the distribution system.
Great. I think the additional questions are probably for our attorney. Thank, thank you for going through that with me. The other thing I want to talk about is, is the, the walk away cost. So in the answers that I got, I wanted some clarification around some of the concerns that Counselor Baker had. And one of those was about walking away from the property. And so I've heard from the public about, you know, just wait, it could get cheaper or, you know, not buying it. Is my understanding right? If, if we were to abandon, it's not like we could go back after we, we went through this whole process of eminent domain. If we were to walk away and then that property went back on cheaper. Nothing is going to compel that, that landlord to sell to us and we would no longer have that tool.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Protem. So abandonment would mean paying for rent of all the time the city has possessed the land. So it would be, we, we were told 7, 8% of the value per year for a raw land. And so if you run the numbers at the verdict, 7 to 8% of $27 million for two and a half years. Giving the city credit for the $9 million it's already deposited. I believe the, the rent figures are, let me see if they've been?
We had 5.4 million is what we were told.
I, I believe 5.4 would be correct then. And, and that does not, though, does not include attorney's fees. So what else, the other thing that happened is the verdict came back more than 30% above our final offer. And it trigger liability for attorney's fees in an abandonment scenario. So I, I think it's important that city council will understand that cost of walking away. So we haven't estimated ballpark on the fees of the other side. They're probably going to be disputed. If they claim $2 million in fees, we're going to be disputing that and asking for a hearing to determine what a reasonable fee would be. But it's probably, you know, if we are successful in, in cutting that in half. You still have to be aware that the fees could be a million dollars.
And then what as far as future action with eminent domain and that property? That's pretty much, we took our shot at that and if we walk away, that, that's that, correct?
Right. And, and so you, the, the data valuation was set as part of this trial. So we were calculating all of the values here as of 2020, basically middle of 2020, late spring, I believe. So, so if we were to abandon in the future, a city council would then have to consider whatever the current market value was. To attempt an acquisition, whether it would be voluntary by negotiating with the landowner. Or if good faith negotiations weren't successful, future city council trying to acquire by way of eminent domain would have a future data valuation. So that's, that's an unknown, but our eminent domain attorneys have indicated land values do rarely go down.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Namela, did you have someone?
I was just going to add real quick too, Mayor Protem's comments on the water rates that we did, correct me if I'm wrong. Because I know we went, we had a lot of meetings. Did we have a public session where we had the model that we went through? If we could give that date to the community as well, that would be helpful. Because I think they could maybe re-watch that. And I don't know if there's any way to, you know, have the community, you know, understand that model a little bit more. But that was really useful in helping us understand the impacts of different rates and costs of development of a water facility. So, yeah, and I think, you know, we still have more work to do regarding the rates and the, and the tier structure. But that's a good place to start.
Mayor Protem, oh, Attorney Frankel.
If I could, apologies. Two, two things I wanted to just offer some clarity on. At our January 23rd session, city council considered two motions. The first was the first reading on the appropriation. The second motion was to authorize the expenditure. So I wanted council to understand that that motion already occurred on January 23rd. And it's contingent on the second reading tonight passing for this appropriation. Second thing I wanted to add to my answer for Mayor Protem's benefit and others. Is that the other risk of delaying acquisition into the future would be this land may no longer be available. So, you know, entirely possible the land gets developed in a different way. So it's no longer available for this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. I, I guess I, I want to just close out. And there was a whole list of questions that, or concerns that Counselor Baker provided to us and some clarifications I wanted around it. And I've asked the clerk to provide these in the minutes for next week. So the public can read through them and see what staff's answers to the concerns were. Because I think it's important, but I don't need to go through all this tonight to share with you my decision. So for me, I'm still, I still think this is the best path with what we have right now. In 2019, when the council decided to domain that property, I wasn't part of that vote. I can't say it's because I voted, no, I was actually in Milan on a business trip. But to some extent, we're tied to that property for various reasons. We could walk away, but we would lose a substantial amount of money as a city. And then if I look at the other options in the city, which there was numerous vetting of other options, there's not a better property. Especially not if you mix in the fact that we're going to lose the amount of money that we do. And to me, if we walk away from that, we take serious risk of losing the one property that potentially is going to be a good fit for us. Even if you went a different direction, I'm not willing to take, take that risk. I am super proud and grateful to staff for the work that they've done to come up with a solution that is saving almost $100 million. That, I mean, can't go unnoticed. And that's what's allowing us in order to have a reasonable rate structure for the next 10 years. So this is still the best option in my mind. Is it perfect? Is it everything I hoped for as we went through this conversation over the last six years? It's not. However, we do have to at some point decide what's the best option to move forward. And at this point, I'm willing to go forward with this.
Counselor Azadi, I saw your light on.
Counselor Emmons. Thank you. I would like to thank my colleague, Counselor Baker, because I feel like it is important that we have communicated to the public that we took another hour tonight to discuss a decision. Even though it is second reading, I think that it's important not only to have that discussion. But we can clearly see that sometimes communication can turn into miscommunication. And we've had various facts and details that were discussed on the dais tonight. So thank you, Counselor Baker, for allowing us to have that discussion. I will say that in 2021, an election was had and it was loud and clear. And there were, there were results from it. Not only of what were pointed out tonight, but immediately Water 2025 was paused. And thereafter, shortly after, water rates were lowered. And those two asks, those two charges were made within six months, if not sooner. And so not regurgitating the details that had come tonight. But I will say that at least three of us have been on, talking about water, Water 2025, whatever the label is now. For more than three years. And we have been in countless hours, countless meetings, countless extra meetings individually with staff. Because we're not professionals. One-on-one meetings to try and figure out the best decision possible. And I will say that I've heard it multiple times up here tonight, that we don't take this decision lightly. This is something that some have run on for campaigns. I will say that the answer, it lies in the details. Again, is it what Mayor Protem Demott said? It's not the best or what we could have ever hoped for in all of our checklists of boxes. But this is the best decision forward. At some point, we have to stop spending years on this to make a decision, to, to make the best step forward. Otherwise, things are going to continue escalating and we're going to be running out of time. So with the information that I have personally gone through, I have personally studied, I have personally seen, have talked to numerous people. I've talked to my colleagues, I will be supporting this tonight.
Anyone else?
I just want to finish up by saying, staff, you have been patient. You have given your time, extra time, no matter which one of us asked for a meeting, you did it. You went to lengths to put a database for us together so we could understand. Because this isn't just about land and everything's independent. It's, it's putting that piece of the puzzle together and each piece is integral to the next piece, to the next piece. It hasn't been just looking at one thing. You have given us more education than probably we ever wanted or asked for. But you've done it with grace. You've done it with, when you didn't know the answer, you told us and you would find out and get, got back to us. That's all we could ask for. And I don't think we've said thank you to you over the last year for all that you have done so that we can make this decision. All of this started and it's been several years, as we've heard tonight. And I hate eminent domain. I hate it to the core. But some of those decisions, and it wasn't until election and getting into meetings with Mr. Frankel, that you understood the entire picture. And you can always look back and say, it should have been done a different way. It wasn't. So we, this council's had to live with where we're at today and what choices we now have. That database that you put together for us. And looking at the comprehensive land use plan that will be coming back to us, that won't be 1,000 acres over what we have. Everybody has worked together, hearing each other, knowing that water is first. We can't build and just build and then figure out water. We must know our water limits and build to that. And boy, if there's a few drops extra, we leave them extra. We don't have to use them up, nor should we. I know some maintenance wasn't done at Semper and that wasn't this council's decision. I don't, and I don't even know that it was any administration sitting here anymore's decision. But we know those things we ran into. There's just been so much. But the bottom line that you've all shared with us in the Water 2025 people that have come to us and shared. And with Mr. Seymour that had been involved with that. We do have to look to the future. I do not want to be a neighboring city that had a new plant open. And within two or three weeks, CDPH was on their door saying, you do not meet these limits for PFAS. We know that. We know new stuff is coming out. You've got, told us, we've got to wait. We have to know what that regulation is going to be before we move forward with this. We can do a lot in between, but there's things we have to look for the future. For this community, for build out, for what the needs are, for what the requirements are. Because the worst solution would be building and we. because the worst solution would be building and we don't have the right stuff in order. We had asked for, we know the differences in all of the, the ways filtration happens. I was rooting for Semper and/or land close to it and, and being able to just add on there. We can't do what's needed for the build out of this city at that site. We just can't. And when you're doing this, you need to do the best we can do, not it's okay. Because it wouldn't meet the PFAS and, and there, we've got that new filtration piece that we have to have. So with all of that, for this piece, if it was me, I probably wouldn't vote for it. But I have to look for what the city needs. And I have to look for the future and the generations that they have good, clean water, no matter what the catastrophe is that we may not even be able to think up today. And so I just want to be sure you guys know. You've put it in simple terms, things that, and that's what makes you so great, is you can get it down so that we can understand, so we can make a decision for this. And I just can't thank you enough. So with that, I will call for the roll call. Counselor Baker.
No.
Mayor Protem Demott.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Narmela.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. And do we have reason for executive session?
Mayor, if, if I could, we do have three executive sessions that are proposed as part of tonight's study session.
So we don't have to do that here?
They're on the special meeting agenda. So I'll, I'll hold off for the exec session titles until we're in the study session.
Okay. So, Mayor Protem. We will take a five-minute break as we transition to the boardroom. We have two study session items that you're welcome to join us with, and thanks for coming tonight.
You get the next slide, please? Next slide, please. So, good evening, council members, members of the community and anybody that's tuned in online. Just a couple things for city update. First thing we wanted to just remind everybody about is that this year we had some extreme temperatures, not our norm, temperatures that go to zero degrees. On this part of our emergency management program, we will stand up an emergency warming shelter, not only for our unhoused individuals, but also for anybody, for whatever reason, if they lose heat in their house. We will stand that up so that they have a place to get inside, warm place, the elements. We could stand up an emergency shelter this past Sunday through Tuesdays. We did have 15 people that took advantage of the facility and we appreciate recreation center staff who are standing up on short notice to make that happen. And I visited that on Sunday afternoons, very impressed by what countryside provides. And I think we worked through quite nicely the guys by getting people there with some city transportation. And then if you remember back in December, we had to do the same thing because of extreme temperatures. We took some time today, or this week, to recognize those city team members that were part of that endeavor at the MAC and recognized them with the City in Spirit Award. And we'll certainly do that again with the team that stood up the countryside here last week. We did want to let everybody know that the city is again teaming up with St. Baldry's Foundation and the Westminster-based Yacht Club Salon to raise funds to fight childhood cancer. Mayor McNally is hosting that event on March 12 from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There are stylists that are on site that will shave volunteers' heads, raising funds and demonstrating solidarity with our cancer patients. So we encourage folks to consider donating to the cause, certainly participating. And the website is listed there. Next slide, please. I just wanted to give everybody perspective on our staffing numbers. You know, we're in the middle of the great resignation and 2022 was a banner year for that. 2022 regular FTE positions filled. So our HR staff working hard and our, and our city teams working hard. So either new hires, promotions or transfers, 298 new folks into a city workforce that's 1,100 folks strong. So significant number of folks into the organization, frankly, to replace and gain a little bit of ground on the second floor, which is our regular FTE positions vacated via separations, promotions or transfers, so 251 folks. And then if you think, you know, that folks aren't interested in coming to Westminster, we had 6,427 applicants to, to work in the city. And so some great work by certainly our HR staff and the rest of the team that gets involved to make those work. But significant transition and turnover in 2022. Next thing I would highlight is, is the city has won an EPA grant to improve energy efficiency and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we received $180,000 from the EPA Source Reduction Assistance Grant to provide energy assessments and then heating, ventilation and air conditioning system upgrades for owners of local commercial buildings. And, you know, so this is focused on the commercial building side. Next slide. Some Westy wins, good news. We've already talked about one of these, but three new businesses in downtown Westminster, and that's at the Ascent Building. We're welcoming Ban Chon, which is a Korean fried chicken restaurant. DA The Valley, a tea shop with fine teas and handmade tapioca pearls, for those that want to try those out. And then Edward Jones Financial Advisor. And that's essentially right across the street from the Olive Garden. So nice to see those new businesses entering the downtown, continuing to grow. The other topic I would mention is Westminster's North Metro Task Force Detectives received an award. And so this was for collective work within the task force on the single largest overdose event in the United States. Five adults overdosed, and that occurred in Commerce City in February of 2022. We had three Westminster detectives that were recognized for their contributions to this effort. And these efforts even received personal praise from U.S. Attorney General Merrick Garland, who traveled to Colorado for a briefing on the case. Next slide. Some things to know, inclusivity board Wednesday night this week, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. It's a hybrid meeting for those that want to attend in person. It's in the CMO conference room or you connect in via Teams. One, one book Westminster discussion, The Woman of Light. I'd mentioned that I've been reading that. I'm about two-thirds of the way through the book. So I still have, have some work to do before Saturday at 11, at 1:30, excuse me. But Saturday, 11th, February, 1:30 to 3:00 p.m., College Hill Library. And then a Spanish version of the conversation, 3:30 to 4:00 p.m. that day. And so, great opportunity, and that one's at Irving Street Library. A city council meeting is next Monday night, 6:30 p.m. here, council chambers. Next slide. Two information-only items that the council did receive this, this week or this, on this Monday night, monthly workforce report, that's from December of 2022. And then a bio-mobility services update on JustGpo. And then, next slide.
It was good to see they were really being used.
Yes, yes. And so, again, we want to be accessible. We want to be responsive. We want to be transparent. We want to be accountable. If you want, if you have questions, issues, concerns, please give us a call. I'm at my office, 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfriteg@cityofwestminster.us. You can follow us on Twitter. You can like us on Facebook. Check us out on Instagram or ring our bell at next door. Any questions, that's all I have.
Quick question for the VIA update. When possible, if we get updated again, it would be helpful to just know, yeah, we have ridership, but it'd be helpful to know, how does that compare? Or what were, what were we expecting? That was the only thing that I.
So some comparison data.
Or just, you know, is that good? Like, is that what we wanted?
Yeah.
And it went up. It keeps going up, it is hanging. I thought it was excellent.
So, yeah, just.
We can do that.
And it was interesting how many, when he use it, but then how many trips it equaled out to. So, that's great.
Isn't like 70% went to grocery? Like, our conversation here today? Yeah.
So, I have any questions other than that? Not, may I be ready to go with our first presentation? We have a presentation on public right-of-way use of occupancy agreements with Google Fiber. So, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Lindsay and our guests, and they're going to run us through.
Thank you, Mr. Fritek. I'm going to let my guests introduce themselves. Hi, everybody. Thanks for taking the time to hear this presentation tonight. My name is Lewis Slipper. I'm the head of strategic partnerships on the expansion team at Google Fiber, and I've been working with city staff over the last several months on the agreement that we're talking about today.
And my name is Jason Bone. I am the tech ops lead for the Southwest region. So, I have responsibilities over the building of Google Fiber Network in markets in Texas and now Colorado.
Thank you. We could go to the next slide, please. Really excited to be in front of you this evening to share a status update on our discussion we've been undertaking with Google Fiber. So, Google Fiber approached staff last year to begin discussion on utilizing public rights of way to deploy a fiber to the home network. This would be a network of fiber internet service that would serve the vast majority of residences and many small businesses in the city. Following tonight's study session, city staff and Google Fiber are prepared to execute a public right-of-way use and occupancy agreement to allow them to move forward with building quite an exciting network of service. Next slide, please. Lewis, I'm going to put you on the spot. You want to talk a little bit about Google Fiber and your service?
Yeah, well, as we like to say, we get paid to say nice things about Google Fiber, but one of the things we're most proud of is our industry-leading customer service. It's not just about getting fiber to customers. It's about continuing to deliver a service that ranks highly among third-party customer service and satisfaction rankings across the country. We're also invested in future improvements to the technology. So, fiber is a nearly limitless medium for the transfer of information, and we'll be able to speed up that service over time just by changing out electronic devices on either end. So, we're really excited to provide greater competition and choice to consumers in the city of Westminster. And our focus is really, for those of you who might be less familiar with our business, it's really on the residential and small business users. That's where we're really, those are the markets we're really focused on today. So, yeah, I think, happy to answer any questions as Chris goes through the rest of the presentation.
Travis, you're reading my mind. I forgot to ask at the beginning if it was okay to ask questions. We're going, or if you want us to wait till later?
Absolutely. Why don't you ask questions while?
The service that you provide to residences and businesses, is it consistent throughout? I know when you're looking at, you know, other types of Wi-Fi or, you know, services that it kind of ranges depending on where you are geographically in the city? So, that's one question.
Yeah, so, I mean, our network will be designed to serve, as Chris said, the vast majority of residences and businesses within the city. We actually bring a physical fiber line to the side of your home, and then when, if you sign up, a technician will come and pull that fiber line into your, inside your home. From there, customers can use either their own Wi-Fi equipment or we provide at no additional charges, Wi-Fi equipment that provides a really strong in-home experience for customers. So, for each individual Google Fiber customer, the service would be the same in their home, depending on what type of equipment they use in their home, if they bring their own or if they use the equipment given to them. But the service we're delivering to their, the side of their home or the basement of their multifamily building is the same speed throughout.
How does it compare in terms of cost with what we are all likely using in terms of Comcast or whatever server provider we have?
Sure, well, you probably all have different bills with those providers. We provide very transparent pricing that's the same at a national level. So, our flagship product is a 1 gigabit symmetrical product that was $70 a month when we started offering it in Kansas City in 2012, and it's $70 today. We also offer for residential customers a 2 gigabit symmetricals service for $100 a month. Small businesses have slightly higher pricing, as is typical. Those services also come with a service level guarantee of 3/9s availability. And, you know, if we don't meet that, which we almost always do, but we provide credits to all of our customers. We're also participants in the National Affordable Connectivity Program, which provides a $30 a month subsidy to qualifying households. So, that's a program that started during COVID in one form, and that the subsidy has increased and is available to, to folks that are 2X the national poverty line. So, they can get that as a credit against our existing rates. You know, further on that theme, we're looking, by the time we are delivering service to customers in Westminster, we're also, we're also planning to have a, an even lower-priced product. So, that $30 subsidy would take the service effectively free to those customers who qualify.
That is awesome. Schools, Westminster?
Do we provide service to schools?
Do you?
We generally.
Yeah, we typically have not historically, but we usually focus on small business and residential. But, you know, I would say, we do have a program of doing community connections. So, we provide like often free service, like some libraries or, you know, community centers and stuff like that. We haven't served schools, to my knowledge, in any of our existing markets today.
Good.
I think we, I think we'd have to probably talk about that. I'm not sure, that's usually a more involved, like an enterprise-type of service when you're providing connectivity in between schools. But, so, I think we would have to look into that a little further.
So, Baker?
So, you actually lay physical cables in really easements the city has?
Correct.
And what kind of a program do you have to fix up the landscape where you lay the cables?
Yeah, we actually have a policy that we either leave it in the state that we found it or better. So, we do, most of our construction is in the front right-of-way. So, either in the street or in the right-of-way between the edge of the right-of-way and the curb. And so, we do full restoration. So, you know, if we're installing there, while it might be a little messy while we're constructing, we restore it back to its condition that we found it.
And what kind of, I mean, the complaint system do you have to take complaints for the unsatisfying?
So, we do have a construction experience hotline that is answered by folks 24 hours a day that will take any kind of complaints that anybody has. It immediately goes directly to my team to either, you know, immediately rectify that issue or sometimes it might be that, you know, we damaged some sort of water line or something like that. Stuff like that happens in construction, but we, they open a ticket and that gets resolved over time.
And are we giving them a monopoly? Is that what we're doing here?
Well, they're entering the market, council, and we've had two other companies that have approached the city and are working, you know, similar kinds of programs. Google Fiber is the first one to the table, if you will. So, they're ahead of the others.
Correct. So, so then, so then the market is open and we're going to allow the same access through to the easement to all the other competitive situations?
Correct.
Okay. Are we going to have, because when you get a monopoly, a monopoly must serve all areas of the city. Is this going to serve all areas of the city or only the lucrative ones?
I understand is the entire city. Can someone correct me if I'm wrong?
And we strive to provide service to as many residents and businesses as possible, and we plan, based on our early analysis, to provide it widely throughout the city of Westminster. Our agreements within, not just here, but with any city, don't provide for universal coverage, like the old cable monopolies used to.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry. I said, the agreements that we sign with cities, with this, this city and all other cities in which we operate, do not provide for universal coverage like the cable franchises of your that were actual monopolies.
So, this doesn't guarantee universal service? Does not?
Correct. But we plan to provide service as lively within the city as we, as we can.
And are we going to be taxing these guys or going to be a franchise fee or?
So, there's no franchise fee. We're actually not allowed to create a franchise in this, in this instance. So, we're charging administrative fees as much as our, as much as are allowable.
And are they going to be paying some kind of sales tax on the service they provide?
You want to speak to that?
Good evening, Larry Dorridge, NBC manager and CFO. Internet services are not subject to Westminster's sales tax. No, there's sales taxes in our state. However, as the company installs the physical assets and uses them in the course of its business, that those physical assets will be subject at one time to the city's general use tax, and that, that is all.
Thank you.
So, is that it?
How are you prioritizing the geographic areas that you will be servicing in Westminster?
So, are, like, as I said, we're, we're looking to serve the majority of the city. When we do our design, our initial design, which has not started yet, we will be connecting to existing connection points in the Denver metro. And then, what we'll do then is build, start building the network out from those locations. We need to place two facilities that are a building like you would see at a, at the base of a cellphone tower. We, we acquire the real estate for those locations. So, whenever we get started, we'll be looking for those locations and then depending on, you know, our success to acquire that real estate will be the, how we determine where we start and where we build from there and which areas get built first.
So, you're starting with existing connection points?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll connect at some, like downtown Denver, and we're looking at a place in Lakewood, which is the city that we already announced that we're going to be building as some data centers where we connect to our national backbone. And then, we're building fiber to whatever real estate we're able to acquire within the city of Westminster to place the facilities where we house our electronics. And then, based on the success of where that real estate is, is acquired, is where we'll generally build out from that location. So, we're not to the point yet to decide exactly where we'll start, but that will happen during the planning phases.
So, it's the existing connection points to connect to your national backbone? And then, you're going to be acquiring land in Westminster to give you more?
Correct.
To give you the tentacles into the city?
That's correct.
So, how long could that process take to actually get a majority of the city getting this? It sounds like that, that could take many, many years.
So, our target timeframe would be in the two-to-three-year timeframe to build out the city. So, that could be a little bit quicker depending on how the construction phase goes, and it could go a little bit longer than that, but that's kind of our target.
Okay, thanks.
I'm here for you.
So, I'm the resident nerd here. I'm a network person by trade. And I've been signed up on your waiting list for some amount of years now. Make sure you get the email. Small business.
You want to start in countryside?
No, actually, as much as I'd love that, because, like I said, I've been on the list. And I think I'm kind of hearing people thinking through the same thing I am. Like, there are pockets in the city where they don't have great service through any of the carriers because of their, the older parts of the city. So, I'm curious how you overcome some of those challenges, like in the historic part of the city, you know, whether it's overhead electric lines, you know, the utilities are in a different position than other places. And so, specifically, I'm curious how, I guess, I'm hoping that you're, are going to go into that historic part of the city. I'm curious how you accommodate with your product with the overhead lines and stuff with the fiber. I know it's possible, but I'm just curious if you've kind of thought through that. And I guess I would encourage that we make sure that we look at that area because there's a need and there is a desire for services down there. And I, I've heard it a lot in my time on council over the last six years.
So, our default, our default method is actually not to go on the pole lines. We do that sometimes out of necessity. There's might be a difficult crossing of a highway or creek that is, you know, going underneath it would be cost prohibitive. So, the majority of our network is built underground within the right-of-way of the street. And so, in areas, you know, like you mentioned, where the services that exist maybe are lacking, so those will be part of the plan. As we get into our engineering phases, one of the things that we will, we do in all the cities that we construct is, you know, with the city staff on permitting the build as we go through the, you know, the two to three years. And so, as we get to that phase, we'll start advertising like, you know, to the city staff and then also reaching out to the community leaders to let them know kind of what our schedule looks like for different parts of the town. But we haven't gotten to that part yet to say that this is when the historical district will be built. But as we get into the engineering phases, that's, all of that schedule starts to come, become realized, and then we share that information on the regular basis.
Just in terms of physically, how you said you're going to build out coming from the south? Imagine that's probably kind of the low-hanging fruit since, you know, that's, that part of the city I'm talking about is on the south end. So, you've probably come across that. Is that typically how it goes or just kind of depends on real estate in this, in the city when it actually connects out to the neighborhood?
It kind of depends. So, where we, the, where we start building the service to be able to start serving customers is really out of those facilities that we get the real estate for. And usually, the fiber that feeds those is either, is like sometimes a combination of us leasing fiber that already exists or building our own. So, depending on where those like locations are located and, you know, how we get the fiber, acquire, either acquire dark fiber to serve those locations and then, you know, start to, it's almost like a spider then from those locations. So, it, you know, knowing exactly like which part of town, whether that's the south side, it may be that on the north side of town is where we get the first bit of real estate, we're able to work, you know, a lease for land there or acquire the land. And we have fiber that we can lease up there, and that's where we start. So, it's, it's not really, we're not to the point where we can say exactly which side.
Makes sense. I guess, last question to, to follow up on something Council Baker asked about. You kind of addressed it. You know, one of the, like, when Comcast was doing a lot of upgrades, there was a lot of, I got a lot of complaints about the boring and them giving a lot of holes and stuff like that. And not, and not picking on Comcast, because I've heard this anytime they dug in the right-of-way where there's a situation and sometimes it takes longer than others. So, like, what is your typical turnaround? And this goes to staff too, because I certainly want to hold anybody who digs in the right-of-way and makes a mess accountable to clean it up. So, how do we make sure there's a good partnership there? And how do you guys as a company make sure that you're responsive to those complaints? What kind of turnaround can people expect if there is an issue?
Yeah, it's actually, one of the benefits of the way that we deploy, which is, is a little unique than the, the industry that you, you might be familiar with, you know, big drill on the side of the road and big pits that are open and for weeks on end. So, we utilize a shallow trench method that is a little bit unique, but it, what it does is it allows us to move more, you know, a lot, a lot faster, and it's a lot less an impact to the community. So, we have our crews that can do about 2,000 feet on average per day. So, what we have said in the past and is really the case is, a lot of times, residents might get up in the morning to go to work and they kind of see our crews mobilizing on their street, and then by the time they get home from work that day, we're, we're gone. Now, there could be still some really small holes that, you know, that they're, you know, with some, you know, the little snow fencing where we have to come back and do some splicing and stuff like that. But the heaviest bit of the construction is usually done, you know, we build a, say, about 1,000, our project sizes that we permit are about 1,000 single-family homes in size, and those are usually done within 60 to 90 days. So, it moves really quickly. Thank you.
And if I could address the partnership approach. So, staff is, staff's been working with Google Fiber to vet their construction approach. We've actually looked at modifying our permitting approach. So, our permitting approach can, contemplates a much smaller construction area than 2,000 feet a day. So, that's something, I mean, even, even their construction approach kind of exceeds how we permit projects like this. Staff has vetted their, vetted their approach. We've also been working with some of the cities, you'll see on the next slide, that they've already deployed, so we understand their methods. So we understand their methodology and what's worked and what hasn't worked. So we have a good understanding and city staff is well prepared for the impacts.
Thank you.
I know we have a lot of public property in the south portion of the city. So if that's something where if, you know, the council is interested in seeing more attention or potentially, you know, the phasing to start in the south or at least prioritize that potentially, I don't know how much land, but I can't imagine it's a lot. But we'd hope that maybe we could work something out or facilitate this southern portion of the city getting served first.
Good to know.
And once you do know where you're going to be, can we get a map so we just go?
Yes, ma'am. So on this slide, just a little bit about some of Google Fiber's current deployments. And certainly the one we all heard recently, which is Lakewood, Colorado. Next slide, please. So you all have managed to ask a number of questions that make my slides a little obsolete. So there's a little bit about their trenching deployment and also that staff has been working with them to become comfortable with the installation method. Next slide, please. So we've worked with Google Fiber to establish in the agreement a bit around communications prior to endearing construction. This includes a construction hotline, door hangers, signage, especially communications to stakeholders such as homeowners associations, neighborhood groups, and an informational webpage. Next slide, please. So a bit on next steps, we'll be working shortly to execute that use and occupancy agreement. Construction on that network is expected to begin in 2023 with the first customers being served in 2024. And then as Mark mentioned, we've also been approached by two other telecom companies to execute similar agreements.
Real quick, just on the webpage and the permitting, is there opportunity there for that? Or was that put into the webpage so that as you do know areas they're going to be, that that would be available on the website? So that people kind of knew as you permitted where they can expect to see them? Or would that be too much to ask?
I think we think about outreach to communities from a couple of perspectives, right? We think about it from a construction experience perspective, but also construction experience is a good way for people to gain awareness about what Google Fiber is or that we're coming to the community. And so customers who sign up like you, you know, one service is available at your address, you'll receive a notification. We don't, and we will work with city staff to provide advance notice to neighborhoods that we're going to be coming there so they know who it is and it's not a city project, et cetera, that it's us and our contractors. We don't typically provide the types of webpages that show kind of like the polygons of where we provide service. More and more, that kind of data is becoming publicly available through the FCC processes. But for competitive reasons, it's part of our, we generally don't create maps like that, but we're happy to kind of engage with the council and stakeholders and the city to update you all on where we are, we just don't generally post this on anything like that.
Thank you. So two questions. I think that would be helpful, the utilization rates over time as this rolls out to come back to us and give us updates on how much is getting utilized. But more importantly, do you have data on, from the locations you've launched at, average decrease in competitors prices, right? Because with your entry, I assume that should lower a big evil corporation like Comcast lower their rates that they would offer based on the new competition. Do you track that kind of data?
Yeah, I don't think we've done any formal studies, but anecdotally, it's nearly always the case that customers, even before our service is available in their municipality, experience higher speeds and lower prices. So, you know, there've been a number of articles written, like when Google Fiber comes to town, customers win, right? Prices go down because of the increased competition with incumbent providers. So we don't have a study, but I think it's intuitively true and it is true in every market that we've built.
And who is the most familiar competitors with fiber? Who's the, who's your peer?
We compete with typically in all of the markets that we are in, we have, there's usually a telephone, incumbent telephone provider who provides service. And that could be either copper-based internet service or they, some of them have built fiber as well. And then there's usually a large like cable M S O like Comcast. So there are some other providers out there, but in every market, so like the A T and Ts of the world and the Comcast, those are the ones that we compete with the most. But they're usually, because we're in so many different markets, it's usually a different one.
Anything else?
Nope.
Nothing else, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations and welcome to Westminster.
Yeah, glad to be here.
All righty, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilors, our next presentation is an update overview of the Westie Water Portal. Sarah Borgers, I think, is going to start us out, turn it over to her team. So Sarah, why don't you take us on?
Hi, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, excited to be talking to you again tonight. This one should be hopefully a less stressful kind of conversation. It's an update on the Westminster Water Portal, Westie Water. This has been a long time coming and we just want to share that there's been a huge team of people all across the city that have been working to make this happen. A small subset of that team is here tonight to give a little preview of what that portal looks like and give an update of where it is and what's going to be happening over the next few weeks. I have Drew Beckwith here, he's a Senior Water Resources Analyst. He's a, I'll just say a jack of all trades, Public Works and Utilities, other duties is assigned as sort of his jam. So Drew's here from Public Works, Brett Mitchell's here from Utility Billing and Finance. And then Keith Elvis from I T was hoping to be here tonight, but unfortunately, he's home ill. So we're, but we've got some good folks here to help walk us through the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Drew.
Cool. Thank you, it's nice to be here. I'm personally just really excited to tell you about this because I've been working on it for a long time. So I'm pretty excited that it's becoming a reality. I also think it's a really cool product that our customers are really going to like, so I'm happy to share. So let's go to the first slide, just a reiteration of what Sarah said. This has really been a multi-departmental effort, not only between Public Works and I T and our Utility Billing Finance folks, but also City Managers, Office of Communications. And there's been two dozen people that have involved at some point in time in this project. And so what Brett and I are going to try to do tonight for you all is to sort of convey how this new product is an enhancement and a distinct improvement over what our current sort of process is, to sort of document, demonstrate, share how this is better for our customers, improve customer service, et cetera. And what we think the best way to do that is just to show you pictures of what this product looks like. So the slides have very little text, they're all just sort of snippets, real life snippets, right off the screen grabs from the product. So maybe just to sort of step one, one step back for everyone who hasn't been on this journey for the past two years with us. Westie Water is the name of our customer water use data portal. And this portal will do things like allow our customers to view hourly water use data, receive emergency leak alerts, set their own usage alerts, pay their bill, track their utility bill payments, set up service requests for a meter lid replacement, and a whole host of other things. It really is a comprehensive product. And to take this next step back, we ended up getting into a position to offer one of these because in 2020, Public Works and Utilities completed a big $14 million C I P project to replace all of our small water meters with automated metering infrastructure. And that A M I, part of a utility best practice writ large across the entire industry is to make the data that A M I creates much more accessible and available to our customers. So we entered into, you know, an R F P competitive bid process to find a portal that we could use to get this information out to our customers. The vendor that we selected through that process was, is a company called Smart Energy Water. So we inked a contract with them a couple of years ago. And we've been working with them really robustly in the past 12 to nine months, really, to get all of this product to where we are today. So Projective Go Live is a week from tomorrow, Happy Valentine's Day. So it's going to start with the web login version to be able from your web browser from your computer. And then a week or two later, at most, we're going to launch the iOS and the Android mobile phone apps. We do the web first to make sure all the kinks are working out before we release the app. So that's sort of the general timing. And I'll just sort of start, the screen stamp on your left is a picture of our current city website. So there is a page about Westie Water, you might have clicked on it if you got an email from the city. This is where we are going to direct all of our communications and outreach. Back to the city website, here's the Westie Water homepage. Of course, it's going to have the button for how you log in. But it's also going to have answers to frequently asked questions, it's going to have instruction sheets. How do I create an account? How do I set up an auto payment? How do I understand that the water that I'm using is normal or right? Or what do I do if I have a leak? So this will be a resource page for our customers. And it's there under the Residence and Water tab, just like the rest of our other sort of public facing water. So the screen stamp on the right hand side is actually what the physical login screen looks like. If you have a login to any sort of internet based thing, this probably looks pretty familiar. You have a username and a password and a big green sign in button. If you forgot your password, there's a button for that. If you forgot, you know, you're having troubles logging in, there's a button for that. If you need to register, there's a button for that. So I'll point out here one enhancement today. If you forgot your password for our current online bill pay customers, we have a product called Paymentis is who we use for that. If you forgot your Paymentis password, you have to call our Utility Billing Office and speak to someone so they can reset your password. Much nicer, easier, more consistent with the way everyone works today. I forgot my password, I click a button and automated process happens. In addition to logging in on this main webpage, of course, there's sort of the F A Qs and contact us information at the bottom or privacy policy. You can also do things without even logging into the portal. You can pay a bill without logging into the portal. You can find out, well, we will take your money in person, payment locations. You can log a service request, you can find out about our conservation efficiency program. So that's all outside of logging in from the portal. So yes, Councilor Zadeh.
Real quick, is the security for this under the same umbrella as all our other security for our website? Brett, maybe my P. This is what P is supposed to be here. It's on the platform? So the Smart Energy Water portal vendor that we chose, so this is software as a service. I can't speak to specifically their security.
And Larry, maybe I can, I'm also not the I T person, so I could be wrong here. But the credit card information is being processed still through Paymentis, correct? So we're not handling that information.
No, never.
So is P C I compliant?
Thanks.
Let's go to the first slide, so after you, second slide, third slide, what are we on here? Third slide, so after you click login, this is what the general homepage looks like. The navigation of the whole entire Westie Water website is very consistent with our city website. So it has these buttons up at the top, home, billing, I can't read it from here because it's too far away. But there are menus, right? You click on a menu and it expands into a sub-menu. And this one, I think, is being highlighted as the account menu, is that right?
Yep.
We've got some things on it, right? Different sub-menus underneath there. Front and center on this homepage is, do you owe any money on your current utility bill? If you do, there's a nice payment button right there. You can also view your bill. Those two bars represent, how much is my current bill for this month? By comparison to how much was my bill for the exact same month of last year? So you can see a year over year comparison. And then on the right, you just sort of have those rounds, those boxes are for, you know, quick button looks into your utility payments or our conservation efficiency programs. In the upper right hand corner, you guys can see there's a bell with a little red circle on it. That's a typical sort of way to communicate notifications. You had a leak on your account, your bill was due, you know, you logged a service request, that's where those things are going to happen. The program is built both with English and Spanish as sort of languages that are hardcoded into the software. So you can toggle between those. And then, of course, I boxed it out, but you could see your name there is, you know, it's going to say something like, good evening, Drew. Let's go to the next page. Yeah.
How far back does the history go?
I'm going to get there.
Great question.
Thank you. So water usage data, as I mentioned, this was one of the big drivers for doing this whole portal project was to create access to this data for our customers. So you can see there are these boxes at the top that offer some summary statistics of how much I use this month or, you know, average for the year. But I felt all your eyes went right down to those green and red bar charts. That is the vendor default, the color scheme there. It is something that we're looking to change in the future. But in effect, their math is, the bar is red if it's greater than the past 12 months of use. The bar is green if it's less than the past 12 months of use. There's no value judgment there, it's just a straight mathematical equation. So in the upper left of the chart, you can see there's a gallon or there's a dollar. I'm looking at the one on the left hand side. So you can toggle between a bar chart of water use or a bar chart of your total utility bill. You can hover over a bar and it will bring up the actual value for that. It was 26 K gallons this month, it was 67 point, you know, $67.13. You can double click on a month and it will pull you down into the daily water use data. So actually, the monthly is here on the left, the daily is over there on the right hand side. Important to know, that's the billing cycle for the month, it's not the calendar month. So if your billing cycle runs October 16 to November 15, those are the days that you're going to see. If you were to double click on the daily bar, you would zoom into the hourly water use data. And I mentioned at the top about we're going to have these instruction sheets for interpreting this water use information. So it'll go into maybe a more of a narrative of what I'm talking about here, about how to move around within the portal. But also, how much is an average water use for indoor water use? City Westminster, single family average around 4,000 gallons per month in the wintertime. 16,000 gallons per month in the summertime. Here are some averages for what is average use during the day or by hour. So we can give customers an understanding about, you know, is what I'm seeing, you know, okay, is it normal? Is it good, is it bad, should I do something about this? And you can also use a calendar, I sort of expanded that on the right hand snap. You can use a calendar to pick a custom range if you actually wanted to look at a calendar month instead of your billing cycle. The hourly data is going to come in 10 gallon increments. This was a part of the process that we were trying to make, how our meter data management system collects data from the meters and how we would display it. So we chose to do it in 10 gallon increments purely for some software capacity related issues. And important to know that that hourly water use data is updated one time per day. This is not a live water use data. So you can't take a bath, get out your phone and be like, how many gallons did I just use, right? You will be able to see how many gallons that bath used the next morning, just not immediately after. I think Brett, the data upload is sometime in the middle of the night kind of thing. So it's wake up and see it, yes?
So on these graphs and stuff, I assume that you guys did some programming with the vendor ahead of time? I was curious flexibility around the views that you, or either that customers can do or that you guys have access to. And specifically what I'm wondering is, is there any ability, say in a given month, to say this month, you were in tier one, this much of the bar, tier two, this much of the bar, tier three, this much of the bar?
So that's exactly what I meant about looking for future enhancements. I would love the monthly bar chart to show the tier of water use, not just a solid red or green bar. So this is the stock product, this is what we got. And yes, we can pay more money and enhance as needed.
I mean, that would be good to look into that specifically. I mean, I brought up earlier in our conversations earlier about, you know, reevaluating after we're a year in with the tier structure that we changed. Because I think one of the asks before was, are we hitting the mark? So just in general, as a council, I would like to reevaluate that to make sure that if there's any adjustment in that tier three. Because to me, that truly should be a, you know, not a, I mean, there could be instances where, say, I bought a pool and I fill it up, I go over. It shouldn't be, I'm watering my lawn and every single month I go into tier three, in my opinion. So I'd like to understand that even for, but for the consumer, I think that's important too, because then they can see my bill was more this month, you know, and here's why.
Right at a glance, oh, it's because I was in tier two, I was in tier three.
Or even like if you look at the year to year and I see year, you know, year over year, last July it was more. I might think. I might think, oh, that's when I serviced my pool. And so, you know, or it was really hot or whatever it is. So whatever they can do in terms of that, I think would be a benefit to the end user and to the rate payer.
Agreed. Councilor Zadi's question, the portal is going to come preloaded with two years of monthly water use data. So that's how you get a, right, this year by comparison to last one. So two years of monthly water use data and one year of hourly and daily water use data. So for those of you quick with math, I wrote it down, Counselor Baker, but it beats you, 8,760 hourly water use data points preloaded for each customer. Yes.
I was just curious, is this going to be available for businesses and HOAs?
The portal is available to every single Westminster customer. And all of the functionality for the portal remains the same for all customers, except for the daily and hourly water use data, which is only available to our customers who have the new water meters. And those were all meters that were one inch and smaller. So it's all of our single family customers and a decent portion of our commercial customers and our irrigation accounts. It's not people like our larger apartment complexes or very large irrigation accounts or the hospital or right, the grocery stores. We have a process ongoing to replace some of those larger meters with this new AMI data. And so when those come along, they will get daily and hourly water use data automatically. We just haven't done that yet. The last thing I'll touch on is sort of up in the upper right, you can see it says select account. And so Rhett will talk more about this, but if you're a homeowner in Westminster and you have a business that's also in Westminster, you'll be able to look at more than one account with one login. So you can toggle between my home, my business, my rental property or whatever, all from from one sign, which is pretty neat. Let's go to the next slide, please. So as I mentioned, this usage data is all an enhancement. Next slide, please. And these custom, these email alerts are also a big enhancement over what we have operating today. So there are two different email based alerts that the portal is going to start sending out very soon after Go Live. One of those is a leak alert. That's for continuous water use. We, the utility, will set that value. Right now, we use 15 gallons per hour for 24 hours in a row. So this is an opt out at registration. We think this is a super important and valuable service for our customers. So when they are registering for the portal the very first time, the box for, do you want to describe, subscribe to leak and bill alerts already comes with the box checked. Folks are welcome to uncheck the box if they want to, but we would rather have them receive these alerts so it comes checked on. Yes.
What kind of, I mean, I know content of the alert, but what kind of alerts is it? Text message, an email, just email?
At this point in time, it is only an email alert. He stole my thunder about additional enhancements about how we can look to do this, both via perhaps text and or push notifications from the mobile app. In both cases, more money, but potential enhancement.
I would be interested in hearing what that is down the road. Because when we started talking about this, that was one of the things I brought up when we said, you know, you guys had come to us. I don't know if specifically if you guys were at the table or not. Remember Greg Moss was part of the conversation. That's how long ago.
Yeah, let's go years.
But one of the things I brought up is like with the cell phone use, when you have something and you want limit, it's nice to know pretty instantly. And so in terms of this, I'm thinking the person who's on vacation and forgot the hose or not that I've ever done that. But it would be nice to get those leak alerts, you know, potentially on something that's a little more instant. I think that that's something that people are pretty accustomed to with that kind of options. So I'd be curious.
Yes. Agreed. Good, good, good thought on our radar, too.
Good question. What is, I mean, I know what a leak is by definition, right? But in terms of this, what is considered a leak? Is it continual, like if I have a toilet that's continual in running? Is that considered like, what is the threshold of?
Sure. So I think maybe what you're getting at is that sometimes continuous water use may not be a leak. For folks that have swamp coolers in the summertime that use water all the time, that's continuous water use. But that's not really a leak. Maybe leak implies some sort of like wasted water. And so truly, we call these continuous water use alerts because what we don't know, what we know is that the meter is spinning all the time. What we don't know if that's on purpose or not. And so what the email says effectively is, hey, it looks like you had continuous water use. This may be because of a leak. It may not be. You know your property best. Go through these kinds of things, see these resources, check to make sure that this is actually a leak that you don't want. And here's some ideas of how you fix it. So.
And then follow up to that is if I'm, if I want to use, let's say I'm watering my garden and that's a continual thing. And I continue to get alerts, how do I bypass? And is there any way to make sure that I'm signed up to alert me when there's a leak, but bypass my usage of what's average?
Yeah. So right now, the portal does not have that capability. So you can either opt into leak alerts or you can opt out. I think what you're suggesting is for the portal to recognize that 15 gallons an hour at your individual property is normal. So we're only going to alert you if it's 20 gallons per hour, but everyone else, we're going to do the 15. That's that's some higher complex ask that the portal doesn't do yet. Yeah, you individually. So so the other kind of email based alert that the portal will set, so these, as I said, the leak alert is the utility set one. There's an opportunity for you as an individual resident to set your own usage alert. And you can set those usage alerts on a daily basis or a monthly basis. So say, for instance, during the wintertime, you go on vacation and you want to know if your meter registered a gallon of water use, right? You can set your daily limit to zero. Make sure you're signed up for these high usage alerts and you'll get an email. You could set it to 8,000 gallons per month to notify when you went between tier one and tier two. You could set it to 40,000 gallons to notify when you're in tier two and tier three. So there are there are ways that you could work around that issue.
Thank you.
That was great. That was a nice dovetail to the usage alert. I'll also note that you can export this data directly out of the portal for folks that like to keep spreadsheets. There's also a green button function, which I don't know very much about, but.
Going to have to do that now that you only go back two years. Time goes back. We don't have much more than two years worth of hours.
Yeah, we actually, right, I mean, right, so these meters only really started reading. Yeah. So my last, next slide, please. The last one that I'll just spin off real quick here is, there's a ways to save tab at the top. These are our water conservation efficiency programs. Everything that's on the portal is a reiteration of what we already have on the website. It's just that, hey, people are on the portal, they're looking at their water use, they're checking out their bill. We should also let them know about our programs that can help them save water and save money. So there's a sort of a suite of different options they can choose from. If they click on one of them, they're on the left, it expands into the one on the right. It has a direct link to our vendors that run these programs. They can sign up. So hopefully, this is easy piece front and center for for our customers. That's everything that I wanted to tell you. So maybe before I pass it to Rhett, does you have any questions about usage or usage based email alerts for the conservation programs? Yes.
Usage, I'm just curious, how many different languages the platform is in?
Currently, English and Spanish. They have other language packages platforms that we could also purchase as needed.
Thank you.
Yes.
How did the meters really communicate their information to the city?
Yeah.
How do the meters communicate?
Be a good question to Brad.
Yeah.
Yeah. So each of the meters have a radio and we have four towers across the city that pick up those radio signals. So it's just a broadcast essentially that the radio towers pick up. And then we download that data into our meter system, which then ends up in our utility billing system.
And my other question is, what is the percentage of our customer base that really pays online today? A third. So two thirds pay by mail.
Not necessarily by mail, but I think, I don't have the numbers in front of me. But I think about a third of the customers use online payments of some sort, some percentage.
I mean, we would then expect that really segment of our customer base to use this.
At least to log in and at least once I would say, no. I mean.
In other words, most of our customers are going to be using.
Yeah, so it's right. So, you know, I was going to talk about the less fun part of this, but right, so there's billing and payments available on, you know, on the portal as well. If it is, we could go to the next slide.
Yeah, let's go to the next slide.
And the more the more fun things are what Drew was talking about, which is what we're, the new, the usage that we're exposing to the customers. So I was going to talk about this stuff, billing and payments and and a couple of other things that are kind of more dependent on the billing system. So basically, looking at the left side of the screen, we're going to, we're talking about the current bill section. When the customer logs in, they're able to see kind of right in their face like they had on the home screen, what their current amount is, a button to make to make a payment and another quick link for updating their auto payment, either enrolling or updating it. We are currently, we're currently going to migrate all customers from the current platform to the new platform. So anybody who has auto payment set up at the old platform, there's, there's no requirement for them to to log in or do anything. Auto payments are going to continue as scheduled. The auto pay options that we currently have on the on the current platform are also going to make an offer on the new platform. So we're not, we're basically offering the same things. At the bottom of this section, there's like a bill summary for the current, for the current bill and a hyperlink for the PDF. That bill summary kind of follows the flow of our of our of our bills. There's no additional information there from what we have on the, that's presented on the bill press. On the right side, the right tab is our billing and payment history. This is an enhancement of our current platform. The current current platform is only providing 12 months of data. As Drew mentioned before, we're doing kind of a rolling two years of information. So this portal is also doing two years of billing history and two years of payment history. That billing history has a summary similar to the other side and hyperlinks for PDFs as well. An additional enhancement on the payment side, the current platform would only show payments that a customer has made in their environment. And with this new portal, basically, any type of payment that customer would have made is going to be shown here for the customer. So if they're making payments in person, online, via Dropbox, any of those methods are going to be shown to the customer. So their entire history for that two years. Yeah, so that's where they would kind of opt into paperless as well. Yes, sir, that's that's going to be here as well. So in in earlier, where we talked about the other notifications, the billing alert and paperless is there as well as various places throughout the platform that shows them. Any other questions?
Just to clarify, one third of our clients pay online. How many auto pay are on electronic fund transfer or just rough?
That's what he means.
Oh, okay.
Some go online each month and initiate a payment. Others are just on automatic, but to us, we're receiving funds electronically for about a third.
Only a third.
Kind of bundled that.
Surprised because, I mean, we had the conversation about people getting a return envelope. So we're not sending a return envelope yet. Two thirds of our customers are mailing in a bill.
But we have a lot that pay in person.
Okay.
So they don't mail anything in as a reference point. We have a lot of folks, Mr. Mitchell was describing, you know, will, I think Counselor Baker asked, will people use this? Some of our customers have have signed up for auto pay. They never log in, they don't look at their bill, they don't download their bill, they don't read their bill. So they may not log, may or may not log into this system. Some do, many do. And while they're logging in to have the customer payment experience, they'll also have now this opportunity to look at what Mr. Beckwith described at the same time. Their water consumption, leak alerts, things of that nature. So it's it's an expansion of what we have already, but it will build on what has been present for a long time. So yes, that's that's about what other utilities are generally experiencing for online payment and customer interaction online. So online is both, I'm going to log in every month and initiate a payment or I'm on auto pay. We kind of look at those as being one and the same, to be honest.
That's completely reverse of the rest of the billing environment.
Right.
Can you send us a breakdown of the how people pay?
Yeah, we can get that.
Including how many auto pay?
It might be useful for us to do that after this has been launched for some weeks and months, because some folks will become interested in it based on our communications and outreach that may not have been interested in it in the past. So we'll we'll put together some data and information.
So I want to just that in current, so currently, before this.
Before this.
Yeah, how are people paying?
Which one?
So the contact up here, is someone actually going to get a person if they call? Because there's nothing more frustrating that if I'm on an account and it's not, I can't read it or I can't figure it out, especially since it's new, am I actually going to get a person or is it going to go to the hotline type of thing?
We're actually going to get a person.
Okay.
That is our current utility billing phone number.
And then for the app, is that still us or is that going to be through the third party provider for assistance?
You mean if you have a question for?
So for example, I have my health provider, but they use a third party app. I couldn't get onto the app. I called my health insurance, it's saying I can't get onto your app. And they're like, that's not us, it's our our third party provider, you need to contact them. So what what does that look like as far as the app usage? If I'm not able to get on or if I can't figure it out, my 90 year old grandmother can't figure it out, do they have a contact that they can call a friend and say, it's not working?
So the first point of contact will be our utility billing phone number. And in that phone tree, if you've called it recently, there's a couple of different options. One of the new options will be for technical support with the Westy Water platform. So for the first year after product launch, we are getting the support and help of the vendor, Smart Energy Water, to staff and in person to help troubleshoot, answer these kinds of questions that are specifically related to, the app doesn't work, I'm having problems, how do I do my usage, that kind of thing. If it's a question about the bill, that's not their world. They need to talk to one of our utility bill.
I'm thinking more technical.
Yes, so.
Okay.
Yes, a person.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, next slide. Okay, so now we're looking at the customers' accounts and we have a new feature with guest access, basically. So under their accounts and typical to other kind of web platforms like this, they have a profile and a link of their service addresses. One of the neat things with this is the ability to kind of kind of link accounts. If you've got more than more than one property, a rental property or a business, you can add them all into one place. You can nickname them and kind of manage them all to one place. And to answer an earlier question around the paperless billing, this is one of the places you can select paperless billing. Paperless, that paperless billing can be selected per service account, per service address. And then that notification is where you accept the email address and stuff like that to those paperless notifications would go to. A totally new feature is this guest access feature. So the, you know, the owner of account now has the ability to basically provide access for a for an additional user. Coming stock out of the platform is kind of two roles. They call it a guest user or a property manager user. That guest user basically only has like read only access. So you could invite like a landscaper to come look at your hourly daily water use, but they can't, they can't see anything else or do anything else in the portal. A property manager access, access level is basically a like a full control level. They can manage the property, do notifications, do the paperless billing, make payments, that sort of thing. It allows property managers, it could also be a, you know, aging parent giving access to a younger child to to manage the account, you know, et cetera. Any questions? I think, next slide. And so our last new feature is basically like service requests. We currently currently only offering a lot of service requests via a phone call. And then we have some forms on our website. And so we're using, we're using the platform to consolidate a place a customer can go to interact with the utility and enter service requests. Two of our common ones are kind of a final reading, move in, move out request. Two of our common ones are kind of a final reading, move-in, move-out request. And additionally, we have a other selection which provides currently three or four options that are stock, and as well as an open text other option. I think we have like disconnect service for repair, maybe like a water pressure check, typical request that we were receiving via phone. This gives the customer an option to do this within the portal, or even before we logged in, at the very, at the very beginning, you can do this without having a, without creating an account. Um, I, next slide, I think that's it.
Yeah, I think that's it. So I'll just close Ret and I's presentation with talking about what's gonna happen next. So if the portal goes live on the 14th of February, we have the mobile apps come out a week or two, preferably, we hope, we think. It's a little bit outside of our hands by the end of February. So at the end of February, beginning of March is when we launch the more very broad, every single address that we have access to in our city utility billing system, it's something like 60, 70,000 addresses, are gonna get a postcard that say, here's the portal, here's the QR code, download the app, check it out. There will then be, of course, in all of the bill stuffers for forthcoming months, broad push to get folks interested, signed up, learn about the benefits of the portal. Really getting to this question of usage, I can't remember who was asking it over here, uh, Counselor Seymour, you were about, 30% of our folks pay online, right? It's not a ton. If you look industry-wide for these platforms, sort of 30 to 40% of all customers participating in the portals is about average. I would love it if we were up around 50%. This particular vendor has a use case in California where 80% of the customer base is on the portal. So there's definitely opportunity, and I, I hope what Ret and I showed you was it was pretty cool, it would be really beneficial for every customer to be on it for all hosts of reasons. And so we're gonna try really hard in our communications and outreach to get as many folks on this as we can. Yes, a few more questions.
One of the things I had asked about when we looked at this forever ago was a lot of utility providers, and I don't know how this would fit into us, and if it would be beneficial. That's probably my question. If you like AT&amp;T, if you do auto billing, you get X amount, $5, $10 off your bill a month. Or sometimes they'll do like incentives in order to do paperless billing, which I imagine has some offsetting costs. I'm not sure what that looks like of, like how we're paying per user versus what we're paying to print a paper bill. But have we thought through some of that, and is there some benefit? I imagine just even cash flow where people are doing auto pay is probably part of the reason there's some incentives with providers to do that. But I've seen a lot of different internet providers that started to go into that, where you get a discount, cell phone providers. Is that something that is worth evaluating, or have we evaluated that? I would imagine that would also help drive up the amount of people using this system.
I know that Director Borgers, being in charge of revenues and expenditures to the utility, is undoubtedly considering those options. We know that Verizon and other businesses in our market here in Westminster do that. I'm sure that she and her staff, once they've got this project wrestled down to the ground, will probably be looking at all of those kinds of innovative opportunities for our customers.
Sounds like a great idea. What do you think?
I would look at it.
We haven't looked at that in detail yet, and that's definitely something we can at least look into and see if it makes sense for us.
The other thing I'm curious about, and I just don't know, because I mean, I always pay online, so the, like folks that are paying online, is there opportunity for them to pay over the phone with the city of Westminster? Yeah, I do a lot of, probably a lot of folks do that. And the only other question I have, this is probably an IT question, and it may even be something that would require executive session, but I am curious to know how we're protecting that data transmission, how we're doing penetration testing on some sort of annual basis for those systems, for what, what they are. And so that probably is a follow-up, it may even require protective session. But I am certainly interested in, in knowing some of the securities being well managed.
He's not here to speak to that, but I'm, I'm, I know there was conversations.
Yeah, there's, excuse me, there's, there's a big part of it in the, in the contract that we wrote that is about that kind of stuff. That is just not my daily work.
Truth. Yeah, I didn't, didn't figure, but I, at some point, if we could follow up on that, just holistically for the, the utility. Yeah. I know that the security of it is obviously one of mine for you all, but I'm curious about it.
My only question is back to your conservation and your boxes that can be bought.
A garden in a box?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So far, anytime I read the fine print, there's two of whatever the amount is. If you buy the bigger box, there might be four that are truly native. Is there no way to get somebody that does native for our area, so that people are truly buying water-resistant plants for this area?
Yeah, I, I think you had a similar question sort of in the middle of last.
Many times, yes.
So I'm.
Anytime it comes up.
I'm gonna try to paraphrase what, what we responded to last time. There are a couple gardens that are 100% native. There are more gardens that are not 100% native plants. And some of the challenges of having 100% native plants is that native plants aren't necessarily easy to grow, both from the nursery perspective, to get in the box in the first place, and for the homeowner to take care of them and have them grow. And the Garden in a Box program is really more about inspiring easy gardening choices that grow well, that look good. And so rest assured, all of the plants in the Garden in a Box kits are low water use, they are friendly for Colorado, there's no invasive species. We do as many natives as we can, but we can't do 100% natives because they're challenging to grow, and we want folks to be happy with their new gardens.
And are they all perennial, so you don't have to buy them every year?
Yes, all the Garden in a Box plants are perennial.
Good, Mayor?
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna make it.
Oh. Do you wanna do the, we can break first.
That's fine. That's fine. Any other question?
Well, the last time around, our voices got weaker in the interview. We're ready to go to sleep.
You need to fix all the site check shit.
Unplug it, plug it back in.
Let me start.
Looks like a bigger problem than that.
He's going, yes, I apologize.
So just, just to help understand, are we still in the study session?
Still the study session to vote on going into executive session. Sorry, the system was not picking up the votes.
Okay, so we need to start at the, do all three votes. We are currently in the open meeting for the study session. Okay, so.
They can hear us.
So the first executive session that's proposed is to consult with special counsel and the city attorney for the purpose of receiving direction for a proposed settlement agreement in the Park Forest Care Center sales tax case, which is Adams County District Court Case Number 2021 CB 31398. This will be convened pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113 C 3 and 7, as well as Colorado revised statute 246402, 4B and E1.
I have a motion second. So moved.
Second.
I moved a second to go into executive session for item A. Well, uh, poll counsel that you are willing to go into executive session and we'll hold things confidential.
Obie Zaddie, yes.
And Seymour, yes.
And Zemins, yes.
Bruce Baker, yes. Dave Demont, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes. And we have those in the room that will be here for executive session A, and I will ask you the same.
Dave Franklin, yes.
Mark Pratag, yes.
Barbara Opie, yes.
Larry Dory, yes.
Deanna Cervantes, yes.
Paul Godet, yes. Angie Bunch, yes.
Pete Moore, yes.
Lee Finch, yes.
And before we begin that executive session, the second agendized executive session in the study session tonight is to consult with special counsel and the city attorney for the purpose of receiving direction for a proposed settlement agreement regarding the estate of Timmy Henley versus City of Westminster lawsuit pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113 C 3 and 7, and Colorado revised statute 246402, 4B and E1.
Motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
So moved a second to go into executive session for item B. Uh, I'll go around and ask that you state your name and that you're willing to go into executive session and hold things confidential.
Obie Zaddie, yes.
Rich Seymour, yes.
And Zemins, yes.
Bruce, Bruce Baker, yes. Dave Demont, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
And the third executive session that's on tonight's agenda is for your capacity as board members of the Westminster Economic Development Authority. So I would ask that you undertake this vote in your capacity as board members of WIDA. The executive session that's proposed is to discuss the status of threatened litigation with the city attorney, general counsel for WIDA, and obtaining city council direction there pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113 C 3, 7, and 8, and Colorado revised statute 246402, 4B and E1.
So as Board of Directors, Vice Chair and Chair, I ask that you state your name and if you're willing to go into executive session, hold things confidential.
Don't we have to move?
Oh, yes. It's been moved a second to go into executive session, item C.
Obie Zaddie, yes. Rich Seymour, yes.
And Zemins, yes.
Bruce Baker, yes. Dave Demont, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes. It is 918.